Good morning, everyone. It being 9 o'clock, actually 9:01, we are going to bring to order the County Placer Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, September 19, 2017. We will begin this morning with the flag salute led by Supervisor Euler.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Supervisor Euler. If you'd like to move down a seat, you can, or you can just be out there on the fringes.
Being that close to attorney.
Okay, could give you hives, yeah.
I was intended a personal.
Got it, okay. All right, well, good morning. We will now move to our consent agenda. This is a roll call item. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by the County Executive Department. All items will be approved through a single roll call vote, although anyone may ask to address consent items prior to the board taking action, and any item may be moved for discussion. So I'll start with the board. Any members of the board have any item on consent they wish to have removed for discussion?
Yes.
Any member of the public have any items on consent that you wish to have moved for discussion?
Ask the item, the Empower Squaw Valley item?
The Empower Squaw Valley item. Okay. All right, shall we take the bulk of the... That was Holmes and Duran. This is a roll call vote. Duran? Holmes? Euler? Montgomery? Yes. Is there anyone here who can address the treasure tax collector item? This is the reapproval of the Empower non-residential application for Squaw Valley ski holdings. Welcome.
Madam Chair, Eric Wademan, Assistant Treasure Tax Collector, and members of the board. With me is Ben Carnahan, Empower Specialist, specifically dealing with this application. He'd be happy to answer any questions that may arise from this situation.
Okay. Can we get just a brief background of what this agenda item is and why we're being asked to reapprove it?
The Squaw Valley debt structure had changed. They merged with other large ski resorts, and so we originally were encumbering all of their property, and now we're just encumbering the three that are having the major improvements done to them. They're doing boiler improvements and solar on their ski school.
And the new, smaller encumbrance of the three properties, would that cover in case of default, the full cost of the loan?
Yes. It falls within our program criteria.
Okay. Mr. Garrett Beating, did you have a specific question about this?
Yes, a couple of questions. As I understand from reading in the material that was online, this is a... There is a boiler on site now, one boiler, that is apparently going to be replaced with a more efficient... With six new boilers. So, one question is, what is the fuel used for the existing boiler, and what is the fuel used for the six new boilers? And what is the kilowatt-hours for the existing design capacity of the existing single boiler and for the new boilers? The issue here for friends of the North Fork is, of course, that the other side of the rim of the Sierras is the North Fork American River, a pristine area, much of it in Wild Scenic River and so forth. And we understand what is the need for this kilowatt-hour... Kilowattage if it's for the valley, current development or new development and so on.
So, I'm sorry, I want to understand your concern. Your concern is with the North Fork of the American River?
The concern, first of all, is greenhouse gas emissions. What is the fuel for the current boiler?
Okay.
And for the six new boilers? And what is the capacity, kilowatt-hours, for the existing and new? And what will that... Is that for the current needs, or what is the kilowattage for? Yes.
Okay, and so...
I can explain.
And I think...
The existing boiler...
If I could first, two clarifications. First, this is... This has already been approved by our board under a different framework, so this is a reapproval of something that we have already addressed. And second, just for clarification, if anyone's confused about the geography, Squaw Valley, Olympic Valley, as it's known geographically, is actually in the Truckee River watershed. It is not in the North Fork of the American River.
Right.
And none of these proposed upgrades to their systems are in anywhere that can, does, or ever will, God willing, that we don't have some crazy geographical disruption drain into the North Fork or the Middle Fork of the American.
I agree with that, though the crest of the Sierras on the other side from Squaw Valley is the North Fork American River, and the development impacts in the Squaw Valley, such as the recently proposed roller coaster, are beginning the Disneyland-ification of the valley.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, you're off topic there.
Just explaining why we're here.
Yeah, no, we're here actually to reapprove an action that we've already taken that has no impact or bearing on the North Fork of the American River because it is entirely within the drainage of the Truckee River. Please explain.
Okay, the fuel that's used for the boilers, and the boilers are to heat the buildings and the surrounding area underground, and also the... All the large buildings in that area, they're... It's heated by propane. The existing boiler was built in the early '60s, and it isn't very efficient, barely 50% efficient. The new ones going in range from 92% efficiency to 97% efficiency. So the greenhouse gas emissions will be less, their whole... They want to pollute less, and they also want to utilize less fuel. So they anticipate about a 30% to 40% decrease in usage in fuel. The solar system is 55 KW, and it's an experiment to see if more solar would be a more efficient way to power the resort itself.
Thank you. Does that answer your questions?
The kilowatt-hours of the...
The boilers are not generating power. They're generating heat for buildings only, so it's...
Well, thank you for this opportunity to raise our concerns.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the board? We have a motion, Euler, second, Holmes. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. Since we only had one item, I did not think that needed a roll call. Are we good, Clerk of the Board?
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent. Okay. All right. We will now move to a public comment. This is the opportunity for any member of the public to address the board on any item not on today's agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes per person, since time allocated for public comment is 15 minutes. If all comments cannot be heard within the 15-minute time limit, public comment will be taken up again at the end of regular session, and the board is not permitted to take any action on items addressed under public comment. Please come forward and identify yourself. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Amy Day. I'm the Placer County Organizer for the Workers for In-Home Supportive Services, and I just wanted to introduce myself. I was originally a home care worker from South Lake Tahoe. I have a brother and a son with disabilities. I sat on our executive board of our union for 10 years, head of Eldorado County, and now blessed enough to be working as an organizer here in Placer County for the home care workers here. And I just wanted to introduce myself and extend an invitation to meet with us. I will be sending you emails, and hopefully you guys will find it in your hearts and your schedules to meet with some of your home care workers as they do a great service for our community and are essential to keeping our elderly and disabled in their homes where they belong. So, it's a pleasure meeting you guys, and I hope that we will have our one-on-one soon.
Thank you, and welcome to Placer County.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Sharon Duchessee. I am an in-home supportive service care worker. I am also Placer County Representative for my union, United Domestic Workers. As Amy said, we'd like to welcome you to join us to any of our functions that we have and to say how much this program means to this county and that we are one of the higher employers of the county. So we're looking for your support to keep the program up and running.
Thank you very much. So, any other public comment here in Auburn today? Is there any public comment in Tahoe? We have a remote link to Tahoe for anyone who doesn't know what I'm talking about. I see no additional public comments, so I will close public comments, and we will move to board member and county executive reports. Any board member reports today?
None.
I see none, county executive?
None.
All right. Moving right along. Okay. We will move then to our first timed item. This is a 9:05 Health and Human Services proclamation. We will be asked to proclaim September 26, 2017 as Mesothelioma Awareness Day. Dr. Robert Oldham presenting. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Montgomery, members of the board. Rob Oldham, Public Health. I'm here this morning to ask for your board's approval of a proclamation declaring September 26, 2017 as Mesothelioma Awareness Day in Placer County. Mesothelioma is a rare aggressive form of cancer that develops in the lining of the lungs, abdomen, or heart. Mesothelioma has no known cure and has a very poor prognosis. It's very hard to say.
It is very hard to say, I agree.
People who have worked with or been exposed to asbestos have the highest risk of developing mesothelioma. According to a 2017 report by the Centers for Disease Control, 2,400 to 2,800 people annually are diagnosed with mesothelioma in the United States. We have a strong and committed group of advocates here in Placer County who are... Some of them are here today in their blue t-shirts, and they... Therefore, greater awareness for mesothelioma and greater research funding. Many of them have lost friends or family members from mesothelioma. In order to support and honor them, to promote mesothelioma awareness, and to support continued research for a cure, we are requesting that the Placer County Board of Supervisors declare that Tuesday, September 26, 2017 is Mesothelioma Awareness Day in Placer County. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I have... Please stay there, Dr. Oldham, and then if the folks in blue in support of this action item would come forward, I will read the proclamation, and then we will get a photo. And you don't have to be in blue if you're here for this item. Sorry, wanted to make that clear. So the proclamation says, "In the matter of a proclamation recognizing September 26, 2017 as Mesothelioma Awareness Day, whereas mesothelioma is an aggressive asbestos-related cancer that affects the linings of the lungs, abdomen, or heart, whereas in Placer County, about 23 people die from this devastating disease each year; whereas the heavy use of asbestos in manufacturing industry and construction has been recognized as the worst occupational health disaster in U.S. history; whereas asbestos was used in the construction of virtually all office buildings, public schools, and homes built before 1975; whereas exposure to asbestos for as little as one month can result in mesothelioma 30 years later; whereas because of occupational, Navy service-related, household, or even incidental exposures and the very long latency of the disease, tens of millions of Americans are now at risk for developing mesothelioma; whereas for decades, the need for research to develop effective treatments for mesothelioma was overlooked; whereas the result of this neglect is that treatments available today generally have only limited effect, and most patients die within only 12 to 15 months from diagnosis; whereas in 1999, the Mesothelioma Applied Research Foundation was formed to eradicate the life-ending and vicious effects of mesothelioma, and early progress in developing effective treatments for the disease is now being made; and whereas the establishment of Mesothelioma Awareness Day would raise public awareness of the disease and of the need to develop effective treatments for it, now therefore be it proclaimed that the above proclamation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer on behalf of the citizens of Placer County at a regular meeting held September 19, 2017, proclaiming the date of September 26, 2017 as Mesothelioma Awareness Day." Wow, I said that at least eight times in that proclamation. All right. You had anything to say? You can hold that. We'll squeeze in here. There we go, let's get centered.
Hard to say, harder to cure.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you. Okay, so I believe we actually approved that under our consent agenda and that we don't need to take an action on that. Thank you all very much for coming out today in support of this proclamation. We very much appreciate it. We are now going to move to a second proclamation. This is a proclamation declaring September 24, 2017 as Gold Star Mother's Day in Placer County. John Melrose, our Veteran Services Officer, will be presenting this item for us, and then I believe we have a Gold Star Mother who is here today to receive the proclamation.
Yes, we do. Thank you very much. Good morning, Chair Montgomery, Board of Supervisors, Mr. Bosch, Mr. Carden. Thank you for the opportunity to respectfully request approval of this proclamation on behalf of Karen Meredith, President of American Gold Star Mothers of Northern California. As your Veteran Service Officer, I have the distinct pleasure of working with those who have served in the military as well as their families. We who have served do so for a number of different reasons. Some to access education services that would have been out of reach, some for a sense of adventure or patriotism. All since January 27, 1973 have volunteered. We train for conflict as an academic exercise, to be ready if the call ever comes from our commanders. At that point, we do our duty, we do our job, and support our people to the left and to the right of us. As service members depart for their bases, ships, wings, posts, our families experience a temporary loss of their loved ones as they leave to serve. They show pride in their family members. They often fly a banner outside their homes representing the loved one that is away, serving in the military. In 1917, a family from Ohio designated a banner to support two sons who were serving in World War I. In September of 1917, the Governor of Ohio adopted this service flag. During World War II, the Department of War issued specific specifications as to the banner, how it was to be displayed, guidelines indicating how it should be flown. The Blue Star banners are displayed today on the families who have loved ones serving in the armed forces. Ultimately, our job in the military is inherently dangerous. When the unimaginable happens, the family experiences devastating loss of a loved one. The blue banner is adapted. The Blue Star will have a Gold Star superimposed upon it with a blue border around the Gold Star. In this way, all who see the banner know that the family has suffered an unimaginable loss. On June 24, 1928, 25 mothers made the plans to create a national organization to be known as the American Gold Star Mothers, Inc., a non-denominational, nonprofit, non-political organization to provide support to the families who have suffered loss, as well as to honor the memory of their children who have lost lives while serving in the military. On June 23, 1936, as declared by Senate Joint Resolution 115, the last Sunday in September would be recognized as Gold Star Mother's Day. On behalf of those families who have lost loved ones while serving in the military, it gives me great pleasure to respectfully request the Honorable Board of Supervisors to proclaim the last Sunday in September as Gold Star Mother's Day. Here to accept the proclamation is Karen Meredith of Lincoln, California, who lost her son, First Lieutenant Kenneth Ballard, on May 30, 2004. She's an active member of Gold Star Mothers, Department of Northern California, in the San Jose Chapter.
Karen, please come forward. Welcome, and before I read this, I just wanted to make a quick comment, which is I'm incredibly honored to be able to do this today, and I'm a Gold Star Sister. So I understand how important this is for you as a Gold Star Mother, and how important this action that our board is taking to all Gold Star family members. And so I'm just... While it's a sad occasion, I'm delighted to be able to do this because I think it's incredibly important to recognize the effects that continue for years into the future after the death of a loved one in service to our country. So, having said that, I will now read this. Whereas on June 4, 1928, a group of 25 Washington, D.C.-area mothers met to discuss the possibility of creating a non-denominational, non-political, national organization comprised of American mothers who lost sons or daughters in service to the United States Armed Forces to be known as the American Gold Star Mothers; and whereas after a 90-day charter period on January 5, 1929, the American Gold Star Mothers was incorporated as a nonprofit organization under the laws of the District of Columbia with a membership of 65 mothers throughout the United States; whereas the organization is named for the gold star on the U.S. service flag that represents those who have lost their lives in service. The service flag first appeared during World War I, but became more common during World War II, when virtually every home displayed a banner with a Blue Star for every member of the family serving in the United States Armed Forces. The Blue Star was covered with a Gold Star to represent a family member that was killed in service. And whereas Gold Star Mothers in Placer County and throughout the United States have suffered the supreme sacrifice of motherhood for our country with the loss of a child, and families share in the sorrow of these losses every day. As a community, we commit to remembering these humble heroes who gave their lives to ensure the safety, security, and individual freedoms of their fellow citizens and people around the world. And whereas we share in a public expression of the love, sorrow, and reverence collectively felt by the community for Placer County's Gold Star families, now therefore be it proclaimed that this proclamation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors on September 19, 2017, proclaiming the last Sunday of the month in September as American Gold Star Mother's Day in accordance with Congressional Joint Resolution 115 dated June 23, 1936. I will come down, and we'll get a photo, and then you're welcome to make any comments you would like.
I am a fairly new resident to Placer County, not quite a year yet, and I did want to thank you all for... I know I didn't give much notice for my request, but as far as I know, Placer County is the first county in California to do this. This has been... It's an educational thing because so many people don't know what a Gold Star family is, but I really want to thank you, and hopefully we will lead the way and get other counties to do the same thing and acknowledge the sacrifice and service of our loved ones. So I want to thank you very much. I appreciate this.
Thank you. Kirk.
Yeah, I am not seeing the proclamations on our consent calendar, either of these proclamations, so I'll go ahead and move approval of this proclamation.
Okay, we have a motion, Euler, second, Holmes, on the Gold Star Mother's Day proclamation.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you for catching that, Supervisor Euler.
And then I'll move approval of the proclamation for the Mesothelioma Awareness Day because I wanted to prove that I can say mesothelioma.
All right, we have a motion, Euler. Do we have a second? Second, Holmes. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, that carries. Thank you for noticing that. I had thought I had seen this.
Normally, they are tucked in there.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Thank you, John. Thank you very much. Appreciate you bringing this forward. Okay, we are going to move now to our 9:10 timed item. This is a commendation, a recognition of Sally Lob. We're being asked to present a commendation commending Sally for over 31 years of dedicated public service as an employee of the Placer County Sheriff's Office. Do we have... We have Undersheriff Wu, it looks like, presenting this today. Welcome. And Sally, come on forward. So what I will do is I will begin by reading the proclamation, and then Wayne can follow up with much vaunted words of wisdom, as I know he is quite capable of. So, this one says, and welcome, good to see you.
Good to see you.
This one says, "In the matter of a commendation recognizing Sally Lob for over 31 years of dedicated public service as an employee of the Placer County Sheriff's Office, whereas Sally is retiring from the County of Placer Office of the Sheriff after serving that agency and citizens of this county for over 31 years. Whereas Sally began her employment as a typist clerk and also held positions as a deputy... Excuse me, as a public safety dispatcher and correctional officer before promoting to Deputy Sheriff with tremendous organizational knowledge and unwavering dedication; and whereas Deputy Lob held assignments in corrections, patrol, investigations, and, most well-known to me, as a Forest Hill resident deputy; and in those assignments, Sally received numerous letters of appreciation from nurses, educators, chiefs of police, and business executives for her diligence and professionalism; and whereas Deputy Lob has been a valued member of the hostage negotiation team, peer support team, and search and rescue, contributing her direct and open communication skills to these assignments, often diffusing sensitive and difficult situations with both humor and genuine compassion; and whereas Deputy Sally Lob received the Life Saving Medal in 2014 for her role in a 14-hour negotiation with a suicidal female on the Forest Hill Bridge in inclement weather, convincing the woman to maneuver away from the railing to safety; and whereas Sally's dedication to the Office of the Sheriff and to the citizens of the community has been exemplary. She has performed with professionalism and conscientious attention to duty throughout her career. Now therefore let it be known that the above commendation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer on behalf of the citizens of Placer County at a regular meeting held September 19, 2017, and acknowledge with great appreciation the exceptional service of Sally Lob, and wish her well in her retirement and future pursuits. Congratulations." And Wayne, before I come down, I know you had a few words you wanted to add.
Yeah, thank you for your time. Thank you, Sally, for being here today. On behalf of Sheriff Bell, I'd like to thank you for over 30 years of service. When I think of working with Sally throughout my career, there's a lot of stories that come up and a lot of things I could say, but I think Sally's wicked sense of humor and a really truly true ability to diffuse any situation stands out. And I think when you couple that with her communication ability and her true big heart and ability to empathize with people, what stands out the most to me, I think, is her contributions on our hostage negotiations team and in our peer support unit. Of all the things Sally's done, she's done everything very well, but I think the mark that she left in being able to use all of her skills, her sense of humor, her compassion to help people in crisis, whether it's on the hostage negotiation team, or more importantly, help her peers when they're going through tough times at work, truly stand out to me, and that mark will be left on those units for many years to come. So, over 30 years, I can't think of a more deserving and well-earned retirement. Sally, and I wish you the best. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Sally, we got a photo, and I'm just not used to seeing you in green.
Blue, all things. Could at least wear a green shirt.
Blue. She's a firefighter now.
They're already whining mercilessly missing you in Forest Hill. Do you have any comments you would like to make?
Thank you, Sally.
Thank you so much. All right. That's all I have.
I just told them about your awesome communications.
Hey, she's retired now. She no longer has to be an awesome communicator unless she wants to.
If I see any of you on the bridge, you know, I will stop, we'll chat.
Just wait, exactly. Point and laugh. Yeah. Thank you, Sally. Okay, we are now going to move to a 9:15 timed item. This is also a Sheriff's Department item. This is an ordinance amendment. This is the Sheriff's Office jail booking access and incarceration fees discussion. Katie Orsino will be presenting. Welcome. Did I get your last name correct?
Orsino, yes.
Orsino, I did.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of your board, Mr. Bosch and Mr. Carden. I'm Katie Orsino, Administrative Services Officer with the Placer County Sheriff's Office. I'm here today requesting your board conduct a public hearing introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Articles 2.116 and 2.124 of the Placer County Code, adjusting the Sheriff's Office jail booking, access, and incarceration fees. Annually, the Sheriff's Office works with the firm MGT of America to study the fee adjustments. The calculation utilizes Sheriff's Office financial data from the most recently closed fiscal year. At the time this current study commenced, that was fiscal year 1516. Just briefly to describe the fees and the adjustments, the sheriff's booking fee may be imposed on a offender at the discretion of the court for actual costs incurred with booking into county jail facilities. This fee is subject to the defendant's ability to pay. The jail access fee is charged to cities when bookings for misdemeanors... The jail access fee is charged to cities when bookings for misdemeanors, misdemeanors, and municipal code violations, with the exception of DUI and domestic violence, exceed their three-year average. The revised sheriff's booking fee and jail access fees are both $553, an increase of $49 over the prior year. Incarceration fees, which are also known as the daily jail rates, are also imposed at the discretion of the court and subject to the defendant's ability to pay. The revised incarceration fee for minimum security is $141, an increase of $134 over the prior year. The revised incarceration fee for minimum and maximum security is $172, an increase of $85 over the prior year. Subject to review and comments, and based on the findings of the study, we request your board approve the fee adjustments as submitted.
Any questions or comments from any member of the board on this? Supervisor Yular?
Yeah, my questions are just the size of the percentage of the increase on these. Given that we do this annually, we, what's driving these costs? I mean, you're looking at fairly substantial percentage increases.
Indeed. So, the data is, the fee adjustments are based on the fiscal year 1516 financial data, and really for the first time, these fees reflect both the Auburn Jail and for the first time, the South Placer Jail. So there is a pretty substantial, as you point out, increase, but we'll see going forward now that we have fully loaded the fees with both facilities, those increases may be less substantial over the coming years.
So Katie, if I understand correctly, what you're saying, in the past, we've not factored in the cost of the South Placer Justice Center?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments on this? Any questions or comments from any member of the audience on this item? I'm sorry? It's a public hearing. I'm going to open a public hearing. Sorry, it's been one of those days. So I am opening the public hearing on the ordinance amending the Sheriff's Office jail booking and access fees charged to cities and incarceration fees charged by the court to offenders at sentencing, based on an annual study of costs and fees. Is there anyone who would like to weigh in on this public hearing? I see none here. I see none in Tahoe. I am going to close the public hearing. Right. Had a motion, Holmes, second Duran?
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
Discussion. May I assume that all of our incorporated jurisdictions have been notified of these fees, and we don't have any?
At the next board meeting, October 3rd, we will be requesting your board adopt the fees, and at the time of adoption, we will send letters, written notices to all of the municipalities affected.
We're not notifying them in advance?
Supervisor Yular, I do know that we have had conversations with all the incorporated cities to let them know that these fees would be brought in front of us today. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that was motion, Holmes, second Duran. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you for your time.
All right, we are now going to move to our 9:30 a.m. timed item. Catching up here. This is a Community Development Resource Agency item. This relates to the Placer County Conservation Program. This is a memorandum of understanding with William Jessup University. Greg McKenzie presenting. Welcome, Greg.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. Greg McKenzie, our Placer County Conservation Program Administrator. I bring to you this morning with pleasure a request for the board to approve and authorize the chair to execute a memorandum of understanding with William Jessup University to facilitate collaboration between the county and the university, also to facilitate research under the Placer County Conservation Program, once that program moves into adoption for monitoring, research, baseline monitoring, and providing William Jessup University students with additional research opportunities as they continue their education at William Jessup. With me this morning is Dr. McGrann. He is Chair of the Program at William Jessup University. We've been already collaborating to some degree over the course of time. As you may know, Supervisor Wigan unfortunately couldn't be with us this morning. He's been taking the lead to facilitate this collaboration over the past several years long before I arrived at the county under my current position, and so I'll probably cover a little bit more than I normally would. I was counting on him this morning to talk about all the great ideas that they've talked about over the years and that we've brought forward into this memorandum of understanding. So, thoughts, ideas, processes, ways to collaborate, you know, just looking at the Placer County Conservation Program, we have a litany of monitoring, adaptive management, scientific research that will be required over the term of that program over 50 years. And so collaborating with William Jessup, its existing programs, students, future programs that it may have, be very beneficial to us and hopefully to the students in allowing them to work under our program and find research opportunities. As you all know, we do from time to time have interns that we bring in under the Community Development Resource Agency. I had one for quite some time. Unfortunately, recently lost her back to graduate school, so obviously looking at Dr. McGrann's students for likely candidates to come help out on moving the Placer County Conservation Program forward to fruition. We don't anticipate any direct general fund costs at this point in time. Right now, it's more staff time than anything in, you know, facilitating the transfer of information, identifying projects and programs that we can work together on. I think ultimately, there will be grant-funded research opportunities that we can collaborate with the university to chase with the state and federal government and other nonprofit organizations that provide us with funding and that are projected over the course of the life of that program to provide us with funding opportunities. The collaboration that we are working on with the university could obviously be duplicated, and we hope to have this be the template for other research and collaboration with Sierra College, Warwick University, Sac State, UC Davis, all of those universities going forward. And I think the more we can do that, the more it will help us through implementation and do that in a cost-effective and a rewarding way for the students. So with that, if there are any questions, I'm happy to try to answer those. I also have Dr. McGrann here, and I would request the chair recognize him and provide him with the opportunity to address the board.
Absolutely, that was going to be my next action. Dr. McGrann, would you mind coming forward and give us a little bit of an overview of what it is that the William Jessup University will be bringing to this, both in terms of students and professional staff?
Sure, not a problem. Good morning, I'm Dr. McGrann, Professor of Environmental Science at William Jessup University, also the Chair of our new department. We're just starting our third year for the Environmental Science Department, so we really are still in a stage of growth. I have about 15 students, that kind of shows you where we're at. We're a small liberal arts university, about 1,400 students currently right now, but I really see this as an opportunity just to plug my students into local conservation efforts. And I, quite honestly, I kind of feel like I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't pursue this opportunity. This is right in our backyard and very much feel connected to the county, and this is a way for us to plug directly into conservation needs here. And lots of opportunities. Our MOU kind of outlines potential opportunities. We're not necessarily saying we're going to do all of these things, they're just examples of things that we could plug our students into, plug our faculty into. So the hope is that this is a mutually beneficial kind of win-win situation. The county gets to tap into the talent that we have. It really is an interdisciplinary project. Everybody from the Computer Science Department build a database to house a lot of the data that we may collect. GIS, I have a GIS course and students that I'm training in GIS to do that, geographic information systems to do that work, wildlife surveys, whatever it might be. So the hope is to plug our faculty and our students into research opportunities, or even just to collect baseline data that's needed across much of the conservation plan. So, we see this as a mutually beneficial opportunity. Now, the important thing to keep in mind, this isn't a binding contract, it's just really a formalizing of the relationship.
Right.
And the hope is that it provides leverage in pursuing funding opportunities, private foundations, granting agencies. When we have a document that says that this is a real relationship that everybody's on board with, that lends a little bit more leverage to getting some funds down the road.
Absolutely. Looks like we have a couple of questions for some board members. Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, this is more just a formal, and I understand and appreciate the fact that this is just a first step in the relationship, so, but I would at some point in time like to see, you know, once we figure out what all the responsibilities are and who's going to do what, a more formal agreement with, you know, the appropriate contract language in it. Just to protect everybody, if William Jessup students are doing work for us, they should only be entitled to be covered, you know, insurance-wise and that kind of stuff for doing our work. So at some point in the future, I'd like to see a more formal document, but this is fine for right now. Thank you.
Yeah, I think this takes us from dating to the promise ring. Supervisor Yular?
Yeah, I am very sorry Robert's not here for this. This entire collaboration with Jessup and the conversations that we're having with UC Davis was really Robert's idea, and as my colleagues know, we are seeking a 50-year permit with the agencies that's renewable in five-year increments. And the ongoing monitoring and maintenance of our, the land that we have in conservation is a significant part of our renewals for our permits, and it's also a significant cost driver in what it is that we have put together for our funding strategy, for the success of the PCCP. And so to the extent that these kinds of partnerships are able to develop and help drive down those costs while providing these educational opportunities, it's fantastic. And the agencies have been very receptive to us pursuing this as well. So it's just, it's great to see it at this point, and look forward to the relationship moving further.
Absolutely. Supervisor Holmes?
Thank you. I'm really pleased to see this come forward. On Saturday, I had occasion to be with Bryce Jessup, and I talked to him about how pleased the Board of Supervisors is to have this relationship with the university. And I told him, you know, any student that gets advancement in ecology or environmental science, they'll have a job for the rest of their lives because the wayward been going. And he was pleased, and we had a great discussion about moving, how William Jessup is growing and moving forward. And as the only four-year university in Placer County, we really appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, so let me just echo my fellow supervisors' comments on this, Dr. McGrann. When I was in high school, I had the incredible good fortune to work with Dr. Paul Erlich at Stanford University in the Heron Biological Laboratories, and I got to work with him both there at Stanford, at the Jasper Ridge Preserve, and also out in Colorado at the Rocky Mountain Biological Laboratories, which were just, it was a phenomenal experience in my life. And every time something like this comes forward, my inner science nerd comes out and says, "Why didn't I do that?" But this is just such an exciting opportunity, and it's such a great opportunity, both for the county and for your students now and into the future, to get real-life, hands-on work experience in the field that will benefit them and their families as Placer County residents. So, thank you so much for being willing to do this.
Yeah, and I'm excited to provide these opportunities. I mean, and this is certainly one component of our entire program. I'm very much about experiential learning and just providing these opportunities for my students. And we're very grateful that we have the support from the county to build this relationship.
Wonderful. Well, we're delighted to be able to do this. So this is an action we're being asked to approve and authorize, the five-year MOU. What is the pleasure of the board? Oh, I'm sorry, was there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. We have a motion, Holmes, second Duran. It's one of those days, sorry. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move now to our 9:45 timed item. This is a county executive item in Economic Development Department. The Sacramento Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce Annual Update, being presented today by my favorite drummer, Robert Dugan, rock star extraordinaire, but obviously Sherri Conway kicking this one off.
Do not drum.
Probably not a drummer, but that's okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Sherri Conway with Economic Development. For more than 100 years, the Sacramento Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce has led the charge in advocating for and supporting our regional business community, and promoting policies and fostering programs to help our community grow and expand. Representing nearly 1,700 members with 200,000 employees, my bad, in El Dorado, Placer, Sacramento, Sutter, Yolo, and Yuba Counties, SAC Metro is the region's leading proponent of regional cooperation, and our primary advocate on issues that affect businesses, economic development, and quality of life. The Metro Chamber also serves as host to the Capital Region Small Business Development Center. So coincidentally, I am working with our friend here to partner with the Metro Chamber and the SBDC to launch our Placer Small Business Center in Rockland later this year. So with that, I'm pleased to present to your board Mr. Robert Dugan, Senior Vice President of Public Policy and Economic Development for SAC Metro.
Thank you, Sherri.
Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to bet that this works terrific. So, thank you for giving us an opportunity to be here, and I'll skip the introduction because my colleague Sherri did a great job. We're here, one of the things that we'd really like to do is be more accountable and engaged, right? So that requires us to come give you an update. We're going to want to do this hopefully annually, and it also helps us as we're working with our local chambers to create that cohesive effort to drive business and economic prosperity. So as you know, the SAC Metro Chamber is a regional chamber. We represent the six counties of the Sacramento region, the California Capital Region. Important clarification, we know we're not the local chamber. We try not to be the local chamber, and our goal is to work as closely with the local chambers as we can, and certainly we're looking at that continuing to grow in that realm. We've had that for many years, and will continue to do it. But we, as many of you know, because you've been engaged, try and take on the regional issues that represent our region and advance our region's interests. So with that, this morning, I'm going to touch very briefly, and we'll keep it tight and leave room for questions. We're going to touch quickly on Cap to Cap, our state legislative summit, our study mission, and those are our federal, state, and local policy major program initiatives that we drive each year that are part of the year-long advocacy effort. I do want to touch on the SBDC as well and our economic development efforts. So with that, many of you know, but I'll just touch, as you know, Cap to Cap is one of the largest, we've been called the gold standard by a couple of administrations of a chamber, local government, civic engagement, advocacy trip to Washington DC each year. Our state legislative summit, we take the same approach in policy development, which I'll talk about in just a second, but going down and meeting with our state legislators about the key legislative initiatives that are important for our regional economic prosperity. And finally, our study mission, this year it's going to Austin, and I'll touch on that briefly, but with our study mission, which is sold out this year, actually all three programs have sold out this year as far as our capacity to bring a delegation, it's going to be focused on several things that we can bring back, and I'm going to touch on that very, again, very briefly. Our regional policy development, and this is probably more for the audience and those at home, we make it take a very deliberate process, as you know, to regional policy development. We have representatives on our 12 policy teams from throughout the six-county region. We inform that policy development with lots of input from local businesses, local governments, local civic and NGO stakeholders, and for this year's Cap to Cap, we ended up with 12 policy teams. And we give consideration to those local issues to make sure we're focused on the regional issues that can help support local initiatives, knowing they may be different in different parts of the region. Our priority issues this year really jumped out at us, and they became obvious, and I just want to touch on those because really that's going to carry through all of our programming at the local, state, and federal level. The first issue is we have a unique opportunity this year to go after regulatory review, reform, and rollback. And that hit so many of our policy teams from agriculture to land use to water to flood, and we carried that as one of our three key issues. And of course, the regulatory environment is the framework in which the economy is built. Next up, of course, is the floor upon which the, or the table upon which the economy is built, and if I can steal a line from your county executive, the roads and rail, pipes and wires that are the platform upon which the economy is built is important to our region, and we're very proud of the role that we play in advocating to make sure we fund those. And I do have to give a spiff to our colleague David because- And I do have to give a spiff to our colleague David because that's where I got that four, that four-word line right there, roads and rail, pipes and wires. And finally, workforce is the fuel. We can't replace the entrepreneurs that drive our economy. We can't manufacture those, but we need to give them the fuel so they can run, and that's workforce. And workforce has really been a challenge for us in our region, as you all know, over the last, the last couple of years in several sectors. So, this year, engagement by the numbers, cap-to-cap, we took back 360 delegates. We had 279 total meetings in Washington. We conducted five major policy briefings for our congressional delegation and the attendees on the program, and we had 35 major meetings with senior administrative officials. And in some cases, those were the senior, senior civil servants because they're the folks that actually carry the banner year-to-year-to-year-to-year, administration to administration. On our state legislative summit, we had 131 participants this year from throughout the six-county region. We had six total meetings in the state capital advocating for our regional policy priorities. We had nine policy teams, and we put each policy team's priorities into a single policy paper. So, we ended up with 36 distinct asks. One thing I think I jumped over, actually, it'll probably come up here if it didn't, but we had 40 distinctly separate infrastructure projects that we advocated for at the state and federal level. And they're all the major infrastructure projects that you're so focused on. These next couple of slides, I'm not going to spend too much time on, other than to say we, we had some pretty good progress this year. And thanks to you and your colleagues throughout the region, we made some major efforts. I do want to touch on just a couple of items real quick because they relate to distinctly Placer County interests, the Placer County Conservation Plan, which you just talked about. We made some major forward effort on that. Because we had the entire region embracing the fact that these are an important tool of land use, we were able to have some significant meetings with federal agencies that helped drive that process forward. I also want to talk about watershed. We know how important our forests are here in Placer County, just as El Dorado County does. We're finally starting to see an understanding in our urban environment about how forest health, carbon sequestration, carbon release with devastating forest fires because of lack of forest management, affect water quality, snow capture, air quality. We're starting to see that come full circle. That's been a many, many-year campaign. The Sierra Business Council, the Sierra Nevada Conservancy have all been party to that. We're starting to actually get some traction on that in Washington as well. So, long way to go, but we're at a place where many of us have worked on for, I would say, a couple of decades. The other thing I'd point out is transportation funding. We're making some forward motion on transportation funding for our key priorities, and we had some really good, successful meetings in that regard. So, I can go back to any of those things if you'd like me to, but we're making progress on a lot of those policy priorities. Next up, I want to touch on our Austin study mission. It's going to be a terrific program this year. We're sold out again on that program. We're wheels up on, I believe, October 10th. And we've got some major themes that are going to have a direct impact. Hopefully, we have some direct key learnings that we can bring back. And here's just a handful of them. Two that I want to point out before I move on is the advantage of higher education integration with the community. The workforce panel that we put together there, that includes the community colleges as well as the university. Of course, University of Texas, Austin, is like putting together all our universities times 10. We understand that. However, we're going to get some key learnings out of there in our partnership with existing universities like William Jessup here in South Placer and the future universities that you all have been working so hard on, as to how those can integrate to really drive economic progress. So, that's terrific. The second one I'll point out is the adaptive reuse. Austin has done some pretty terrific things on urban reuse, but they've also got a terrific program relative to a former IBM campus. I think it was six buildings that they did a suburban reuse. So, think Sunset, right? Think HP. Think our colleagues down in SacCounty with Aerojet Rocketdyne Property. There's some direct corollaries there. So, we've worked really hard to make sure we build into our study mission key themes that we can then ask those questions of that can help inform us. And maybe it adds to our fuel as we're figuring out how we go forward with the things that you're all working on. Finally, economic development. We drive economic development through the metric chamber, both through policy as well as through our Small Business Development Center, and Sherry referenced that. Our Small Business Development Center is a program of the SBA. We are the contractor for the eight counties around the California Capital Region, and we deliver direct services to grow business through the Small Business Development Center. The Capital Region SBDC, federal program, 50% of the funding comes from the federal government. In pretty much every other state of the union, the states contribute the other 50%. It's a matching program. Here, the state does not, and we go out and raise that money from private sources, banks and other businesses that are interested in growing the economy. We serve eight counties. If you look at the map, you get an idea. In Placer County, we serve up through the 916, and then starting in the 530. The Sierra Business Council is our partner that has the contract to serve the 530 area, and we have a strong partnership with them. It's interesting, I was just on a wilderness survival experience, met a young lady that's growing her business, started to pitch her on the SBDC, and found out she's already plugged in up there with the Sierra Business Council and their SBDC program. So, it's a terrific program. The way the SBDC works is direct consulting with businesses. When somebody has an idea or a business that's either in trouble or trying to incubate, we have SBA-certified consultants that can go in, identify their business challenges, and help them address the things that they need to address in order to grow it. And those are metrics, right? We have metrics. We have accountability in that system, and we have to utilize that, those resources, those finite resources effectively. If I jump through to the holistic Capital Region SBDC, we created 100 new businesses already in the last two and a half years since we've had that contract. We're looking at between 600 and 700 jobs that are directly tied to the consulting. I had a good question the other day. We've got 32 million in new capital. And I'll give you just one example of how we do our metrics, because everybody likes to say they create jobs. Well, with our consulting, we have direct ties to these companies where we're consulting. Many times, we'll have somebody who wants to grow their company that has been turned down by every bank that they can possibly knock on the door of. They come into our system, we consult with them, we help them build the fiscal acumen and the business model necessary, and then we work out with the SBA backing to help them get back out into the marketplace and get the financing they need because now they can check the box. They're no longer a bad risk for a banker. So, it's a direct number. So, when we share with these numbers, these are numbers directly tied to the program. When we look at Placer County, and I think this is my last slide, we've served 216 clients over the last two and a half years. 47 of them have had measurable economic impact. That means growth and economic impact to Placer County, directly tied to 106 jobs and almost 1.5 million in capital infused that we were able to bring in. You've got the example there of one company, a construction company, that was about ready to close their doors because they couldn't keep up. We were able to help them get the fiscal acumen they need, build the business model they need, go back in, get the loan they need to increase their revenue, buy modern equipment, retain their existing eight employees that they were about ready to say goodbye to, and add two more. And that's an example of the direct benefit. And I'll close with something I think's really important to you all. You know, this SBDC model fits really nicely with the South Placer Small Business Development Center that Sherry's been working on. We've got an opportunity here with the vision and the plan that you've all adopted and supported to create a model. We've talked about this for years. We now have all the pieces in place to actually build this one-stop model that takes care of people and business, right, in a location, and the notion of an ombudsman that helps them with their regulatory permitting, right? Certificate of Occupancy, fire permitting, planning permitting, that as we pull this together, again, I think it'll be a model that we'll push. There's plenty of our organizations out there that just want to beat on local government about fees, but we all know the reason we're having those difficult discussions about fees. We know about the ERAF shift. We know about the limitation of local tax revenues and the difficulty of maintaining strong solvent local governments. We'd rather be in this position where we're pitching the solution that helps grow business. And that's one of the things you're all working on right now. So, with that, I'll end it just real quickly. The reason our program works, we bring it out to the locations. Folks don't have to come to our central office to get consulting. We consult with them where they are, and that's something we'll be doing in this regional, this regional business center that you're all talking about. So, with that, there's my update. I made it as quick as I could. I know you've got a robust agenda. Any questions?
I see no lights from any of the supervisors. Is there any member of the public that has any comment on today's presentation? Anyone in Tahoe? My only comments are thank you very much for your willingness to come out and give us an update on this. It's always good for us to have it all sort of pulled together in a package so we understand the spectrum of things you're doing and the broad array. And I did want to touch just very quickly on your comments around forests and air and water and how important that was at last year's cap-to-cap, and I'm hoping that that's something that we can continue to beat on our federal representatives and folks in the administration to help us grapple with this huge growing problem in California. So, thank you.
Thank you. I will let you know the Clean Air Partnership and their, in their recent advocacy, we're a partner to that. Their recent advocacy relative to cap and trade and everything that's going on with the state had a significant section on it. And of course, your air quality officer was with us as we developed that policy focused on that, on that forest connection, because it is all tied together.
Absolutely.
One big forest fire and all air quality.
Out the window. Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move to our 10 o'clock timed item. This is the county executive office item. We are being asked to adopt the fiscal year 2017-18 final budget. We will be conducting a public hearing to approve the final budget. We will be asked to approve the 2017-18 final budget, including adopting a resolution adopting fiscal year 1718 final budget for county operating funds, approving final budgets for county proprietary funds, approving the items listed on the county master fixed asset list, and introducing an ordinance approving the fiscal year 2017-18 final budget uncodified allocation of positions to departments. We are also going to be asked to adopt a resolution adopting the 2017-18 final budgets for special districts governed by the Board of Supervisors. And new this year to this set of actions, we're going to be asked to adopt a resolution approving the project list in accordance with Section 2034 of the Streets and Highways Code in order to be eligible to receive road maintenance and rehabilitation account funding. Kate Sampson presenting today. Welcome.
I was going to say, after that, presentation over.
Well, it said an hour, and that was not an hour.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board. Kate Sampson with your county executive office. Today's everyone's most favorite day of the year, when we get to consider the final budget. And we're pleased to present this balanced budget package to you today. Just as a reminder, we were here on the 13th of June with your proposed budget. That's your interim spending plan. And then, in August, we gave you an update on our budget development and received additional direction from the board about how you'd like one-time funds to be spent, such as carryover funds from the prior fiscal year. And then, today, we're here presenting our recommendation to you. The state does require that you adopt a final budget by October 2nd. So, we are well within that guideline and are pleased to present these recommendations to you today. So, I won't go over this in detail. Chair, you did a wonderful job reviewing the actions recommended today. There are a number of items, so just for the public's benefit, these are the components of the budget that we're asking the board to approve today. So, we'll jump right into a quick overview of our operating budget. For all of your operating funds, the total budget is about $866 million. You'll see that year-over-year, that's about a 6% increase, which is really just reflective of general cost drivers, as well as an increased investment in reserves for both specific and contingency purposes. Another view of this shows a breakdown of how we spend those dollars. So, notable here is salaries and benefits constitutes about 39% of the budget. That's one of our largest expenses, our people. We are a service organization, although my comment would be that this is relatively low compared to what a lot of other agencies need to put into compensation in terms of their total budget. Also significant are services and supplies at about 21%. And you'll see there, although it's a relatively small piece of the pie, appropriations for contingencies and reserves, that is up this year by about 1%. So, an increased investment there. So, I'd like to quickly review some of the significant changes since our proposed budget in June. First off would be investment in capital facilities based on your board's direction in August on a capital facilities plan for this year. We have included budget for a number of projects at your direction, including the Coroner Facility. We also have the Elections Warehouse and three jail facilities or upgrades to jail facilities, as well as a number of remodels and safety projects that are included there. There's also an increased investment in transportation infrastructure, starting with about $900,000 for road repair equipment. According to the California Air Resources Board requirements, we need to update our equipment for better emissions, and the equipment we're proposing to purchase would assist with our compliance efforts, help us be compliant for the next several years to come. Additionally, we're recommending 100 miles of chip seal at about $1.1 million to maintain and improve our road quality or road condition. And then, as mentioned, new this year is SB1 funding. So, as a reminder, I believe in April, SB1 or Senate Bill 1 was approved, which increases gas tax and some other funding mechanisms. The long and the short of it is, we'll begin seeing revenue this year for the first time in February, and we anticipate about $3 million from that funding source. And we'll review a little bit later in the presentation how we intend to make use of those funds. Further, we have a contribution to open space acquisition in coordination with the Placer Legacy Program. It's about $1 million. And on August 8th, your board approved a housing program work plan for fiscal year 1718, and funding in the amount of $225,000 is included here. We also have some technology upgrades in the public safety realm at about $2.3 million, and several items under what we're calling fiscal sustainability. So, first on that list is our pension rate stabilization. CalPERS rates are in the headlines quite a bit lately as we try to plan for future rate increases there. We recommend an investment of $1.1 million in a Section 115 trust, which would allow us to invest funds to help us stabilize the cost to the county over time. Additionally, we recommend $1.9 million to our contingency reserves. That's to meet your board's 5% reserve policy so that we've got money available in the event of a rainy day situation. Further, we recommend a contribution to our economic uncertainty reserves in the amount of about $1.5 million to address emerging issues such as increased contract costs for our fire services. And as we continue to contemplate how we might tackle some of those issues, we recommend including funds in reserves for those uncertainties. Again, as a reminder, we discussed last month implementation of our PPEO agreement, which covers a number of the county's employees. Total cost to all funds is about $8.8 million. And then, finally, we include technical adjustments and cost updates to your final budget, so it's the most accurate picture of what we expect our costs to be since the budget was developed earlier in the year. So, I'd like to give you a quick overview of our general fund. This is the fund over which the board has the most discretion. This is a picture of revenues and sources, both for years 1617 and 1718. What's notable here is that top blue bar is local taxes. We see about a 5% increase there. That's primarily driven by our property tax, which is a function of assessed valuation increasing year-over-year. Additionally, you'll see the very bottom blue bar, fund balance carryover, has increased to about $47 million this year. This is a look at how we intend to spend those funds by category. You'll see salaries, well, across the board, you'll see about a 5% increase related to general cost drivers. Also notable, at the bottom, there's a larger dark blue line, appropriations for contingencies and reserves. Another look at the general fund expenditures is by system. So, you can see kind of by function how the county intends to spend its discretionary dollars. And again, you see, you know, a general increase in most categories. And again, you see, you know, a general increase in most categories. Health and human support is held constant, and most others include that same about 5% increase. Again, at the bottom, you'll see the dark blue provisions for reserves.
Are you working with different?
Yes, I'm sorry, that page has been replaced. And now, we should be back to your printed slides. Thank you. On the subject of reserves, you'll see in our general fund, this is a look of about the past decade of reserves your board has appropriated in the general fund. You'll notice in fiscal year 10, 11, 12, at the height of the Great Recession, making use of those reserves for just what they're intended, economic uncertainty and contingency. But you'll see for fiscal year 1718, we have a nice, healthy reserve, slightly exceeding our 5% target by board policy. I'll also provide a quick overview of some of our other major funds. This is the Public Safety Fund budget for 1718. You'll see again that the year-over-year percent change is about 6%. Again, general cost drivers, although requiring additional support from the general fund in the amount of about $4.8 million. A couple of notable expenditures are the $3.1 million county match for two of those jail facilities I mentioned, the acute mental health facility and medium security housing facility. Those are 90% grants. We match with a 10%, so good value for the county to be able to leverage those dollars. Additionally, $1.7 million for final implementation of dispatch and correctional management software systems, to be sure we're operating with good functional systems to support our staff. I'll also note $100,000 for support of a new professional standards unit in the Sheriff's In terms of our capital and infrastructure funds, you'll see that year-over-year, the total expenditures are decreasing, although we have included appropriations for all of those capital projects that I mentioned earlier that your board approved in August. As other projects are completed and adjusted, those kind of roll off the books and new ones are added. So, overall, a total decrease, but investment in a number of new facilities here. Additionally, on the top chart, your road fund, so to speak, is including the Senate Bill 1 revenue that I've mentioned now, and we'll go into more detail at the end of the Your proprietary funds have a total budget of about $127 million, I'm sorry, $137 million. These include our internal service funds, which cover things like IT, employee benefits, building maintenance, those types of services internal to county operations, as well as enterprise funds that run more like a business, such as transit and M-Power, solid waste management, those types of functions. This is a summary of the changes to our funded positions. Most notable here are two additions to the District Attorney's Office for Social Security Administration Fraud Investigators, which your board has recently approved, as well as the addition of 10 bus drivers in the Placer County Transit and TART systems, both to meet service requirements and reduce our reliance on contract staffing for those services. Additionally, there are a number of positions moving between departments, which represents many of the other changes on this slide. Staff recommends your board also approve budgets for special districts. You have 164 special districts governed by your board for a total of almost $49 million. Some of the most significant are included here, including your sewer maintenance districts. And now, a bit more information on the road maintenance and rehabilitation account, or SB 1 funding. Again, this was signed by the governor just this last spring, and the funds will begin being distributed in February. In order to be eligible for the funding, a project list must be submitted to the California Transportation Commission, which indicates how the county intends to spend those funds. We do expect about $3 million in this first year, and the project list attached to the resolution proposed for adoption today reflects these anticipated expenditures. About $2.8 million for 10 and 1/2 miles of asphalt overlay on the west shore in the Tahoe region, and about $100,000 each for Americans with Disabilities Act curb ramp repair and tree trimming and other vegetation management. So, next steps, we'll review any questions you may have. I recommend you open the public hearing to receive public comment, and then we proceed to adoption of the final budget, which includes all those elements that you initially noted.
Okay, we will begin with any questions from any member of the board, and then we will open the public hearing after board questions. Supervisor Euler.
On Slide 6, you identified $8.8 million for the implementation of the PPEO agreement. And I'm wondering, since our board has not acted on the management component yet, is that assumed that board will take action on management? Is that included in that 8.8, or will that be supplemental?
No, sir, that would be supplemental.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Supervisor Euler? Any questions on this end of the dais? Okay. Kate, the only other, it's not really a question, it's just sort of throwing it open for discussion at some point in the future, is the board took action within the past year to higher host compliance to start better managing the vacation rentals in Placer County generally. And I know that the dollars that we've collected so far are included within this budget, but I would hope that at some point in the future, we as a board can have a conversation about, in light of what I would characterize as unexpected revenue coming to the county in conjunction with the challenges we have with workforce housing in Placer County, perhaps we can get a board item to have a discussion about, maybe there's an opportunity to use some of that unexpected TOT revenue that certainly in the Tahoe area, at least, is displacing longer-term rentals for employees, and maybe applying some of that TOT to the identified problem we have with housing. So, just food for thought, maybe it's something we can bring to our Tahoe meeting. So, seeing no other questions from the board, I'm going to open the public hearing and have given an opportunity for any member of the public to weigh in on any piece of the budget actions that we are taking today. Is there anyone who has a question or a concern? Please come forward, identify yourself, and just if you tell us generally where you live, you don't have to give us your street address, but...
My name is Sherry Cusick, I live in Rockland. I just have a couple of questions. I don't know if you want me to ask a question.
Yeah, ask us, and then we'll ask staff to answer them.
This is all new to me. So, is this the public hearing they're referring to?
Yes.
This is it?
Yes.
Okay, so, on the road conditions, SB 1, is that a guarantee? Did that pass? Because I'd heard that it may be going to the ballot. So, did that definitely pass for the gas tax?
Kate, do you want to address that, or...
And if not, what happens to these projects? And does that also include Highway 65?
Okay.
Yes, Chair Montgomery, SB 1 did pass in April and was signed by the governor. I understand there are a number of efforts by various groups to consider whether that remains in the future or that there be other mechanisms to address when adjustments to taxes are made. But as of now, we do anticipate the revenue for this fiscal year.
And the identification of these projects is not a guarantee that we will get funding for them, but it's essentially a placeholder saying when these SB 1 revenues are collected, Placer County would like to use them for these purposes.
That's correct. And I understand that the Transportation Commission doesn't necessarily approve each project on its own merits. We simply have to report how we intend to make use of the funds to be eligible for receiving them.
Okay. And then, there was a question about Highway 65.
Is that included in the projects? Or you said it's not specific?
The project list that we have does not include any Highway 65-specific projects, does it?
I would have to defer to Public Works on whether there are any...
We have Ken Graham here, so we have Public Works.
That's a mess. Highway 65.
Oh, sure.
Ken Graham with the Department of Public Works and Facilities. So, the RMRA funding, this one portion of SB 1 funding is really for road maintenance on local roads. That's what we were talking about today. There are other roads that the gasoline tax will be promoting, existing programs, enhancing funding for other programs, those we may be able to compete with for projects on Highway 65. Most of Highway 65, though, we have in our South Placer Regional Transportation Authority Program, which are developer fees that are being collected. There are efforts underway for some of the design of those improvements, particularly the IAD Highway 65 interchange.
So, there is hope.
Absolutely. In fact, there is a project that actually will be, I think, scheduled to go out to bid and be under construction next year.
Yes.
So, that's at the interchange, the first phase of the interchange. And then, we are beginning design for some of the widening improvements going up Highway 65.
Right, especially by the wall and...
Absolutely. In fact, all the way up to Blue Oaks, I think, is some of that first portion.
Supervisor Euler, did you want to add something to that?
Supervisor Holmes and I serve on the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency Board. We did approve the Phase 1 improvement, the 8065 interchange. So, where you now currently have the three-to-two lane neck down before you cross the flyover, we're adding an additional northbound lane, and that northbound lane will actually continue all the way up to Pleasant Grove. So, we're going to have additional lane capacity. That project goes out to bid by the end of this year, if I recall correctly, and we're looking to be under construction beginning next spring, and we anticipate a two-year build.
Perfect. Okay. Couple other questions I had. On the Criminal Justice Master Plan, there's construction of an acute mental health annex and medium security housing facility. Where will that be located, and is it for inmates only?
That would be at the Santucci Justice Center, where our existing jail facility and the courts are.
I have to fill in. Okay. And is that just inmates?
I believe that is just inmates, yes.
Okay. The housing program work plan, what is that and where can I get information? Is that the low-income housing? Is that homeless shelters? Is that, what is the housing program work plan?
So, the housing work plan is a plan that we adopted earlier this year, and actually we have not adopted it yet. Let me correct myself. We are working on that. It is a county-wide plan. I think probably the best thing that I could do, Jennifer, should I have her speak directly with you? Okay. Jennifer, can you put your hand up? Jennifer can get you a card, get you some contact information, and direct you to the appropriate place on the website to read all about it.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
As far as the Community Development Resource Agency, there's contracts for the Sunset Industrial Area Planning. What type of contracts and what's going to, the plans for building, and can I get information on that?
Is there someone from CJ or Dave Contorton? I love it when the public actually has questions. It's so exciting. Such a change of pace. Thank you.
Oh, sure.
Dave DeFanti with the CEO's office. Yeah, I'd be happy to chat with you afterwards and get you my card. But there are a series of contracts for processing the Placer Ranch specific plan, as well as the Sunset Area Plan.
Right. Okay. Okay. Then, one last question. On the operating funds, on the county budget, there's a Housing Authority Fund and a Low and Moderate Income Housing Asset Fund. Where can I get information on that, and what does that cover?
I think Jennifer can also probably direct you to that information.
Okay. And that covers everything.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Wow, that was exciting. Seriously, these things are usually just sort of, no one shows up. Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. Mike Garabedian, Placer Group, the Sierra Club. I don't think I can be any more exciting than that.
Probably not.
I think less so, because the two issues I just wanted to mention, not just in passing, but to emphasize because we've raised them before, was on the capital improvement program. The prime example being the initial funding that the county has made for Phase 1 of Placer Parkway. That is an expenditure for a project that, in the manner you're doing it with leading funds, is a great concern to us, and our opposition to that Parkway is reflected in our concern.
And as I recall, the Sierra Club actually signed on to the Parkway project.
That's not my understanding.
Yeah, actually...
We can point you to that agreement.
Well, please do, because that's not possible. I mean, maybe...
No, it absolutely is possible. The Sierra Club and the Audubon Society together signed a joint letter in support of our conservation plan. And as you know, a key element of our conservation plan, a key project in our conservation plan is the Parkway, the construction of the Parkway. So, they are in full support, the Motherlode, what is it, the Motherlode Division?
Chapter.
Whatever our, and I'm blanking on our friend's name right now.
Terry Davis.
Terry Davis.
Terry Davis, thank you. Whatever group he represents, he signed along with the Audubon Society, the letter in support of the conservation plan, which anticipates the build of the Placer Parkway as a part of the plan. The plan cannot happen without the Placer Parkway.
Well, this is about the third or fourth time you've raised that issue to me, and the first time I said, if you're right, I will look into it. I have discussed this with Terry Davis. The Sierra Club has not taken a position yet on the PCCP itself because it has not come out for us to look at and take a position on. The Sierra Club has supported and been involved in the process of developing the PCCP, very long-term, as you know. And as I've also expressed, transportation issues are a different kettle of fish, different than the conservation protection. The greenhouse gas emissions...
This is an entire build plan for the build-out of Placer County, including the Incorporated City of Lincoln, and the transportation element is a key provision in that build-out. Without an adequate transportation plan in that, our EIR would be insufficient and the plan would be worthless.
And I would suggest, just so we don't go too much down a rabbit hole here today...
Well, he's changing the subject.
So, no, the subject is the transportation.
The subject is the manner in which the county is funding that.
What I would suggest is that you take some time to meet with Greg, who is handling the, Greg, back up there, who is handling the Placer County Conservation Program, and he can fill you in on all the history and the involvement of the Sierra Club and the Audubon Society.
Well, the Sierra Club did pay attention to Phase 1 of Placer Parkway and saw some salient aspects of that which have been changed. But in terms of the whole Parkway and its relationship to the PCP, as I told you, the Sierra Club has not yet taken a position on that. And the issue here is the mechanism of funding, where you're pre-funding with county funds to a certain extent. I don't know what extent. It will be reimbursed by developers and so forth. And that is our concern here about the capital improvement program and the other issues there.
And I believe our CEO has just duly noted that concern about funding mechanism.
And so, the wrong direction that we have noticed with the funding is in terms of Placer Ranch, with the county having taken over that project after the developers left and spending county resources to continue to employ the consultants developing that. So, we understand that process is in the EIR review and other process for that and the Sunset Industrial, and we are following that. But we think it's not the right direction for the county to go to become basically the developer as well as the reviewer for entitlements.
And I note that both our CEO and our county council have made notes around your comments.
So, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this agenda item? This is a public hearing. This is your opportunity to weigh in, ask questions, get clarifications, mount criticisms, give kudos. All right, seeing none here in Auburn, anyone in Tahoe? I see no one in Tahoe who wants to weigh in on this, so I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. We have a series of actions here. County Council, can we take these all in one action, or would you like us to take them individually?
I'd like 2, 3, and 4 to be taken individually.
2, 3, and 4 to be, that would mean we would need to take them all individually, the way I count.
Move item 2, A, B, C, and D.
2, A, B, C, and D.
Okay, got it.
3 and 4.
I just made the motion on 2, A, B, C, and D.
Okay. Euler moved on 2, A, B, C, D, and E, seconded by, no E, seconded... seconded by Duran. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Move item 3.
Have a, motion Euler, second Holmes on item 3. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
And move item 4.
Motion Euler, second Holmes. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All motions carry. Thank you. All right, having completed all timed items, we are now going to move to our department items. We're going to begin with a Public Works and Facilities item. This is the Watt Avenue Over Dry Creek Bridge Replacement Project Engineering and Environmental Services. We're being asked to re, award a request for proposal to Drake Haglen and Associates. Welcome.
Thanks for having me.
Sorry, it's been a long morning.
No, I don't apologize, you have to be here the whole time, I'm happy to be here. Matt Randall with Public Works and Facilities, and so, good morning, still morning.
It is still morning.
Still morning. So, yes, we are asking you to adopt a resolution to award request for proposal number 10460 to Drake Haglen and Associates for Engineering and Environmental Services for the Watt Avenue Over Dry Creek Bridge Replacement Project in an amount not to exceed $3,710,229, and to authorize the Director of Public Works and Facilities or designate to execute future contract amendments up to $50,000 as needed. This project is funded with the Federal Highway Bridge Program, 88.53% and 17.47% with Dry Creek traffic mitigation fees. So background on this bridge, Watt Avenue is obviously an important connector route between Placer County and Sacramento County, serving all the businesses in West Placer County. The bridge is old and, and starting to reach the end of its useful life, it's very narrow, and just starting to have issues, so in trying to stay ahead of this issue, we would like to replace it. And this contract is needed to do the engineering and environmental services near to clear the project and get it ready for construction. This is a pretty big contract, and so, working with procurement services, it was advertised as an RFP publicly through their website. We had four firms respond, and three were interviewed, and Drake Haglen and Associates was selected as the most qualified firm. We negotiated this contract and then submitted it actually to Caltrans for a pre-award audit to their Audit and Investigations Division, who reviewed it for federal aid compliance, and we got through that successfully. And so now here, we're asking you for approval. So with that, just open it up to any questions.
I see no questions from any member of the board. Any member of the public have any questions on this item? Please come forward.
Yes, Mike Garabedian for Placer Group Sierra Club. This project is obviously necessary to help facilitate the great development proposed to the north of, north of it. And we're, I guess we're talking about the $3.7 million, it's not clear what the total cost of the project is. I guess there's a multiplier there. But this, this, is this a general fund allocation?
Matt, would you like to address that?
No, it's not a general fund allocation, it's actually funded with Federal Highway Bridge Program funds. So that's an actual safety program to rehabilitate and repair and replace bridges. And then actually, the other component is the Dry Creek Traffic Mitigation Fee program.
Which is not a general fund contribution, it's a specific designated fund.
So this will be subject to an EIR process, that's what this is paying for?
Well, right now, typically, our bridge, we haven't decided the scope of the SEQA document yet, but typically, we would do, since we have federal funds, we do a SEQA and NEPA process. So the NEPA process typically, typically for these bridge replacement projects would actually be, and we would do technical studies, and it would be a categorically exempt project. For SEQA, we would do kind of a parallel SEQA and NEPA document. We haven't decided the level of document, but we want to study it first a little bit, and then we would decide EAR, or what the appropriate documentation level would be.
What would be the, I assume it would be expanding the current two-lane to how many?
Yeah, well, we are planning potentially to expand it to four lanes, depending on, I think, traffic volumes. I think the, the separate process that I think you're referring to would ultimately expand the road. But the bridge project, I think we're keeping separate at the moment, so it's to be determined. It'll probably be a four-lane bridge, though, is what we would be studying.
Thank you. Look forward to following the process you're paying for.
Any other questions?
Rather, it's paid for as explained.
Any other questions or comments on this item? All right, what's the pleasure of the board? Motion Holmes, second Duran. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thanks, Matt, much appreciated. Now we're going to move to the Summer 2017 Federal Hot Mix Asphalt Overlay Project. Kevin Taber presenting, welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This next item, we are asking you to approve the competitive bid number 10635 to Knife River Construction Company out of Chico for the summer, we're still in summer, by a few more days, 2017 Placer County Federal Hot Mix Overlay, Asphalt Overlay Project in the amount of $2,176,244.40. Also asking you to authorize the Director of Public Works or is designate to execute contract change orders up to 10% of the contract amount, with no single change order exceeding $150,000. We, like Matt's beginning to do, we waited through the, the grant process, the Caltrans paperwork process, put this project out to bid this summer, and we opened bids late last month, excuse me, and five bidders responded. Knife River Construction out of Chico was a low bidder. We had five bids ranging from Knife River's low bid to a high bid of approximately $3.3 million. Engineer's estimate was $2.8 million, so we were able to receive some favorable bid prices, which is, which is good. With that, I'll turn it over to you, if you have any questions.
Supervisor Euler?
Well, given that we've got three days till the autumnal week, well, you guys better get busy.
Exactly, yes, sir.
So is it, is it realistic to expect that all this work will actually be done before the rains set in and the temperatures cool too much, or?
You bet. As a matter of fact, we had a, a pre-construction meeting with the contractor last week, just informal to, to discuss schedule. They anticipate starting work, presuming the contract is awarded, on October 9th, Monday, it's a, they, they figure 18 to 21 days of paving. And so, yeah, we, we should be able to get everything completed by, yeah, I guess we don't know exactly when the rains are going to start. The only minor exception to that will be Penrin Road. Matt's also helping us out with a culvert replacement project there. And depending on the timing of that and how we get through, how he gets through the permitting process, we may only place the first lift on Penrin Road, follow it back up in the spring with the final lift after, after the culvert's been replaced.
I was hopeful that Penrin Road would be the first one. That's like driving through Islamabad when you hit that road. It is unbelievable how torn up that is.
Yeah, winter, last winter did not do it. Any favors?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It, it's not alone in its sad state in the county, sadly.
No, I know, but that one in particular is just really bad.
Yeah, it's pretty brutal. All right, any other questions or comments on this item? Any public comments on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Motion Holmes, second Duran. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll now turn this over to County Council.
The board will now adjourn to closed session for a conference with legal counsel to discuss one item of existing litigation. The board will also have a conference with its labor negotiators. The board has returned from closed session in a conference with legal counsel, case of Derek Conover, the county of Placer. The board authorized a defense and indemnity of the employees named and served in that case, subject to reservation of rights. The board also unanimously approved outside counsel contracts to represent, to represent as co-counsel with the county council's office, the county Sheriff Bell and Deputy Erwin. And the board also approved a second outside counsel contract to represent the remaining employee in that action. The board also had a conference with its labor negotiators and heard a report and gave direction. That concludes the closed session report.